June 15, 2015, meeting of the Anorondle County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Fink will lead the invocation.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you give this council the wisdom and the courage to make the necessary decisions so that we can continue to move this county forward. We also ask that you look at our citizens overseas and bring them home safely. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. This evening, we have a number of Boy Scouts with us. I would like to ask them all to come down right here in the front, if they would, stand right in front of the little half-wall right there with the microphone, and I'd like you all to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, we have with us Troop 1036 from Fort Meade. I believe that's Mr. Pruski's district. We have Troop 454 from Davidsonville, my district, and we have Troop 422 from Annapolis, Mr. Trumbauer's district. So if you all will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, as you're ready, the flag is right here behind me. When you're ready, gentlemen.
[inaudible 00:00:55]. It's to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregretted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your help. Madam Secretary, will you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that, as present, review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council briefly on any subject that's not on the printed agenda? Please come forward at this time. We ask that you state your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jim Doyle. I live at 2909 Center Street in Edgewater, and I'm the President of the Edgewater Homeowners Association. In this week's Capitol, the paper headlined, "Auditor Proposes a Rate Cut to the Water and Water Bills as a Way of Offering a Tax Credit." I don't mean any disrespect to a person who comes forward with this concept.
Mr. Doyle, that topic is actually on the agenda this evening.
I didn't know that. But I'm not talking about the tax cut. I'm talking about the method of using a tax cut. If you use that method, you leave out communities like Edgewater Beach. Apologize, I just ran into this. I have ten topics left. In this package, you'll see that sixty years ago, my community petitioned this county to join the sewer and water system. As recently as 2008, we had a new petition drive in which we voted to spend $2 million of our money to become connected to the sewer and water system. This proposal simply adds insult to that injury. We were never able to connect to the sewer and water system that our taxes helped pay for. You may not be aware that the sewer and water system was initially funded by general revenue funds. Our neighbors were connected through tax credits given to them but excluding other communities. Now, that handout, Dick, Dem, excuse me, shows that there are 28 communities that our county health department has said are at health risk because they don't have adequate sanitation. Edgewater Beach is one of those communities. Now, I know this is an old issue, and I'm glad we have on our council an expert in this field, but there are recent developments I wanted the council to be aware of. The Department of Natural Resources-
Please summarize this, Mr. Doyle.
Sure. -has given a grant to the South River Federation for a study to figure out the fair and equitable financing and engineering to get our community connected. That study is underway, and it will require actions by this council. So I want to bring to your attention the need and the fairness of finally resolving these sewer and water issues.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I know that you're heavily into thinking about revenues and taxes and so forth, and so I thought I would remind you again that not only can you rate, you can solve some problems by actually enforcing certain laws that are on the books. For example, when a property owner applies for a permit, most of those permits are supposed to be posted. In many cases, they are not posted. And because the enforcement policy works that the inspectors only come if they get a complaint, a person is, you know, one neighbor is not the policeman for his neighbor if he doesn't have that permit posted. Then he's caught between a rock and a hard place. Should he go and say there's a problem? And if it's a recurring problem, what kind of friction does that create? And it would be much easier if there were simply some sort of relatively minor fine for failure to post, because if it's posted, then you know what the guy is doing and that he's lawfully allowed to do that process. That would generate some revenue, and it would tidy up some things and reduce some neighbor conflicts. In the same vein, I pleaded with you to have the police department issue parking tickets to my neighbors, because over the years, that would generate enough money to finance, you know, a new high school, or at least a half of a new high school. I have also pointed out to you, by providing you with this 2003 plot prepared by the Severn Surveys, that shows that my neighbors encroach. Now, I concede that Judge Silkworth said that I had given my neighbors permission to do this encroaching, and I-
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. And I protest that I did not, but this postcard with the plot shows very clearly that there is significant trespass every day, in addition to the other kinds, at a fine of $2,500 per day, times three people, six people, nine people, you know, 1,000 days, you're looking at-
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
100,000, $1 million, $9 million?
Thank you for your time. Thank you, this evening.
I sure hope that you'll start considering enforcing the laws and protecting me.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill 6315, An ordinance concerning zoning self-service storage facilities. Bill 6415, An ordinance concerning licenses, amusements, commercial bingo licenses. Bill 6515, An ordinance concerning personnel exempt service deputy central services officer. Bill 6615, An ordinance concerning personnel classified service exempt service emergency management director. Bill 6715, An ordinance concerning personnel exempt service deputy director aging and disabilities. Bill 6815, An ordinance concerning personnel positions in the classified service office of information technology. Bill 6915, An ordinance concerning recreation and parks, civil offenses. Bill 7015, An ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget revenue reserve fund. Bill 7115, An ordinance concerning pensions, interplan transfers, chief of police. Bill 7215, An ordinance concerning subdivision and development and zoning residential subdivisions abutting heavy industrial zones. Bill 7315, An ordinance concerning public works, utilities, metered water, and wastewater charges.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution 2515, Resolution relating to condemnation proceedings to acquire certain interest in real property from the heirs of Lorraine P. and Georgie Green. Resolution 2615, Resolution appointing a member to the Anorondle County Ethics Commission.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolutions 2315 and 2415 out of order?
It's been moved. Second?
There's a second. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Prudke?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolutions 2315 and 2415 out of order is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2315.
Resolution approving appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Anorondle County Retirement and Pension System for a term expiring April 30, 2018.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Marzick. This time, we'll open up the public hearing on Resolution 2315. If there's anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 2315 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2315.
Resolution approving appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Anorondle County Retirement and Pension System.
Thank you. Any final discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 2315.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Prudke?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2315 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2415.
Resolution approving the appointment of a Severn River Commission member.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. Resolution 2415 appoints William J. Kardashian to the Severn River Commission. Mr. Kardashian will fill out the current term that expires until January 31, 2015, and begin a new term, February 1, 2015, that will expire January 31, 2019.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Marzick. This time, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2415. If there's anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 2415 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2415.
Resolution approving the appointment of a Severn River Commission member.
Any final discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 2415.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Prudke?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 2415 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4315.
An ordinance concerning zoning breweries and farm breweries.
Thank you. This is my piece of legislation. As you'll recall, we adopted a bill a couple of months back that related to zoning in particular breweries, and during the debate, there were some folks who expressed concerns about farm breweries and the restrictions on them in South County in particular, and so they asked us to tighten up, if you will, the, some of the rules, and I guess make them a little stricter than what state requires, and so we've, in an attempt to make them happy, we've made a couple of suggestions in the bill. And with that said, I'll turn it over to the administration and see what comments or questions that they have.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. The County Executive supports Mr. Walker's bill. I think you just described the bill as to the details of it, and I think Mr. Tom or Mr. Swain would be, from the Office of Law, happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Ms. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I remember the discussion that Mr. Walker referenced about additional quality-of-life protections for South County, and they seem like they're addressed in this bill. It also looks like we're expanding the definition of a craft brewery to include Class VII microbrewery license. I don't know anything about breweries. I mean, can you just give us the executive summary of what that's about?
Well, craft breweries are specifically defined use under state law?
Right.
Under the state code. So with this, adding that to the way our craft brewery definition originally was drafted, it was the broad definition of a brewery in state code.
Okay.
Now, the Class VII license for a microbrewery is a smaller use, and there are some different restrictions imposed upon that, but I believe the intent is to include both of them in craft brewery definition.
And so is this, is this change consistent with the other changes to make it, I guess, more restrictive to do these activities, or is this just something you found when you were going back and changing it, and you thought, oh, we better fix this, too?
Well, I think the, the way that we had originally defined it is craft brewery is a brewery that's less than 22, 500 barrels per year.
Yeah.
So that was our definition. Under state code, craft brewery is, that is what a craft brewery is.
Okay.
It's defined to have that limit. So it is a little bit more restrictive for actual craft breweries, because there are some other restrictions imposed upon that as far as on and off sale. So I think it was meant, again, I'll defer to Mr. Walker on that, but I think it was meant to sort of make that definition consistent with state law, and then address the other issues with farm brewery in the other section of the bill.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I was a co-sponsor of the original legislation, and I shared the same concerns with tightening up the South County provisions, so I just wanted to make sure this was as advertised. Looks good. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Any additional questions? Mr. Prudke?
Just for clarification, the change that's happening here is this limit to six non-consecutive single-day festivals? Is that what's, is that the change we're talking about?
There's a couple of them. Ms. Tate, would you care to recap them for Mr. Prudke?
Certainly. The idea behind the festival language that you find in the conditional use section is to limit the number of events that a farm brewery can have, as well as the number of days, because there was testimony during the last round of hearings about how these could go on for several days, and the idea was to limit them to a single day, as well as to prevent a multi-brewery activity from occurring at the farm, which are, is something that is an option under state code, is to bring a number of breweries to one farm and have an event. So that's not something that would be available for the farm breweries under this.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. This time, we'll open up the public hearing on Bill 4315. Is there anyone wishing to speak on 4315?
Good evening, members of the council. Philip Dale's at Five Park Place in Annapolis. I just want to speak in favor of the amendment to 815 that adds the Class VII brewery to the definition of craft brewery, and to address some of the questions that Councilman Trumbauer just raised. The Class VII brewery in the state code is defined very similarly to the way that the craft brewery was defined in 815, the initial, the original bill. The Class VII brewery is the lesser use, it's the smaller brewery in the state code, and the Section 12104 of the state code has a very strict prohibition that would have prevented people who had an interest in a retail bar, retail license, from having a brewery if it was only the Class V's in Anorondle County. So the change, while it doesn't have any effect of opening up to larger breweries in Anorondle County, does allow, it prevents that prohibition from coming into our, through our zoning ordinance. Thanks very much for the amendments.
Thank you. Any additional testimony on 4315? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 4315 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4415.
An ordinance concerning zoning commercial districts funeral establishments.
Mr. Grasso, this is, I believe, your piece of legislation. Would you care to give us any opening remarks or comments? Explanation?
What I had is one of my constituents wanted to put a funeral home, and the place that they have, and at least in my opinion, is an ideal spot. You know, it's backed up against 97, and the catch between this was, and this is from what I can remember, was is that we wouldn't allow a funeral home unless they were connected to an arterial or collective road. And this guy's issue was it was a private road. So I said, well, if he owns the road or wherever it is, who cares if it has the word arterial or collector on it, it's private, so let's just go ahead and change it and put private road in there, because the county doesn't have to spend money to service the road. So let the guy have his business where it's supposed to be. The administration said it was an idea to go that way, but they said by doing that, that opens a broad brush for maybe situations that weren't so good, by using the word private in there. So they came up with an alternative solution on how to handle this property, and I'll leave it on that.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. We support Bill 4415. Mr. Tom from the Office of Planning and Zoning is here to answer any questions the council may have, or to expand on Mr. Grasso's points.
Mr. Tom, any comments?
Just to add a little bit to what Mr. Grasso's comments were, we did work with him on the creation of this bill, and it was our suggestion to add the language about local roads, and that's embodied in the bill, so I think the bill works.
And how does that protect the community?
The other provisions, I think, as part of the conditions, serve that purpose, particularly in terms of some of the setbacks and things like that.
So as just a question from my, prior to where I live now, I lived on a private street. So as long as, so there's no restriction in the fact that, I guess, if other people live on the private road and own parts of the road, there's no, are there any protections for them, or is it just he has to own the entire road?
I, can, Mr. Trump, I don't understand. I think we're missing that it's not that it's a private road, it's the level of classification of the road. It's a local road. Whether or not the road is private or the road is a public road in the Anorondle County list of roads, the issue is that it's the lowest intensity of a road, is a local road, and that was the issue with this particular lot, because where it's located, the road is privately owned, but eventually it feeds out into a road, so that's where the restriction was coming in. It wasn't allowed under our code. So rather than opening it up and being concerned about local roads, private or public, the lot restriction in terms of size was placed in, as well as the setbacks from the residential, from any residential property. This particular parcel that was brought to Mr. Grasso's attention is not really close to any residential property, unlike the example that you gave.
Right.
So, but I think, talking to Mr. Tom and the members of his staff, we've sort of closed the loop on that, so it should be adequate.
That's correct. And I should point out that, you know, the, these funeral homes on the local road, again, are restricted to commercial districts. So the zoning would be in place for that activity.
Ms. Chair. Ms. Trumbauer? Thank you, Ms. Chair. So that's what I was going to ask you about, Mr. Tom. Is, are there many circumstances where you would have commercial districts on a local road, or are these generally more residential roads?
They would be predominantly residential.
Yeah.
They would serve residential communities. I wouldn't say that there are no commercial zones along local roads.
Okay.
Or within the midst of predominantly residential.
I mean, the reason I'm asking is, I'm already envisioning, if we pass this bill, getting some emails saying, someone's going to open up a funeral home across the street from me, and I just want to make sure that I have a reasonable idea of what the universe is here.
I would say that, that it would be rare to have a commercial piece of property in the middle of a residentially-zoned district-
I agree.
...that has 20,000 square feet.
Okay. Okay. So this may not be a unique situation, but it is rather unusual.
That's right.
Very good. Thank you.
And 20,000 is about a half an acre, is that?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's a pretty small lot, though, isn't it?
Well, only if, you know, I mean-
What kind of facility, commercial facility could you put on a 20,000? How much of that could you actually fill up with a facility? Because you'd have got parking, and you've got-
You've got parking, and you've got your-
Store modification, and you've got all kinds of-
Sure.
It'd be a pretty small funeral home.
I don't, I think, I think it would be about average size.
Okay.
Still, on half an acre.
And 25 feet to a residentially-zoned or occupied property, feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Chair? Uh, Mr. Smith?
And just quickly, again, it is conditional use, so there are some mechanisms in there that if it just completely is inappropriate for a specific location, that that vehicle will be ample enough to prevent it from taking place there.
We believe so. So long as it meets these conditions, we would be able to approve it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Trump.
So when I get the call, I'm sending it to your office.
Absolutely. We'll take care of it. It won't be the first, it won't be the first one.
Yeah, here's-
You were talking to him right now, man.
Yeah, not you, Bernie. I'm sending it to Mr. Tom. Fair enough. Any additional questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing at this time on Bill 4415. Is there anyone wishing to speak on 4415? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 4415 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4515.
An ordinance concerning personnel classified service exempt service.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick, when you're ready?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. Bill 4515 has been before you. We amended it at the last council meeting. This is the pay bill that establishes the pay schedules for county employees for fiscal year 16. We do have one technical amendment. There's a mistake in the number, it was, should be 68,039 instead of, it should be 68,093, so we've offered that amendment to the council tonight.
Fair enough. Any questions from the council? Seeing no questions, we'll open the public hearing now on 4515. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this bill? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 4515 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4715 as amended.
An ordinance concerning personnel exempt service assistant chief of police and deputy police chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. Bill 4715 reorganizes the leadership positions and titles within the Police Department by changing the exempt assistant police chief to be an exempt deputy police chief, and maintaining one deputy, one merit deputy police chief, and creating two exempt deputies. This is a bill we have before you at the work session, as well as the last council meeting. We have Major Cramp from the Police Department to answer any questions the council may have.
Good evening, Major. Good, thanks for having, coming down tonight. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Thank you all very much. We'll open up the public hearing on 4715. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this bill? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 4715 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4815.
An ordinance concerning personnel classified service overtime pay, police communications operator four.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick, when you're ready?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. Bill 4815 allows police communication operators to receive overtime pay. It previously had its ability, but it sunsetted in 2014. This bill was, again, was before you at the work session, as well as the last council meeting, where it was amended. Here to answer questions the council may have is, again, Major Cramp.
Ms. Chair? Ms. Trumbauer? Thank you, Ms. Chair. Mr. Marzick, I remember this bill from last time, and we amended it. Do we, did we put another sunset on it? Okay. It's between that point and now, we passed a budget, and I forgot a lot of stuff, so.
Right.
Okay, so the, the sunset is one year from now?
June 30, 2016.
Right. Okay. It's all coming back.
Line two on page two.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, at this time, we'll open the public hearing on 4815. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this bill? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 4815 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4915.
An ordinance concerning employees and police service retirement plans, county attorney and chief of police retirement dates.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick, when you're ready?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. Bill 4915, again, was a bill that was before the council for the work session, as well as for the last council meeting. as for the last council meeting. Based on some feedback from the council, we're offering an amendment tonight to remove the county attorney from bill 4915. This bill will now allow the police chief to receive his or her, his or her pension due to time of separation from county service, provided he or she is not removed from willful misconduct. Again, we amended this bill at the last council meeting, and we will be offering an amendment tonight to remove the county attorney.
Mr. Marzick, you have also introduced a bill this evening that's on the record, will be heard in a couple of weeks, that also offers a solution. I think the council was fairly clear, maybe I was, maybe I was misunderstanding the situation, but I guess I'm confused, I'm trying to understand why continue down the road with this bill when you've already introduced a competing bill-
Sure.
-that offers the solution, I think the majority of the council expressed interest in supporting.
We introduced that, we sent that bill down, actually, last week, and in the time since, we've had several conversations with councilmen, and it seems to be there's indication that there may be support for this bill as an option. So we felt like this would be a good option to pull out the county attorney on this bill, and if the county doesn't seem fit, or the council doesn't seem fit to pass this bill, the other bill will be in the process. There's also a difference in that the other bill would obviously be a change in kind of a bigger picture policy, I think, to allow for the police chief, because you could pass both bills, actually, if you wanted to.
And this isn't a big policy change? What you're proposing?
Well, I think, I, I think it is a big policy change, but I think from a, a different perspective, and there are very specific ramifications of, or specific qualifications, I guess, under 4915, that there wouldn't be under bill, I don't have the number in front of me, but-
I know which one you're, I don't have it.
Under the bill that was introduced tonight, that, that would really apply to any police chief in the future, whereas this would only apply in a very specific circumstance.
Got it. Any questions from the council?
But again, that was based on feedback we've received in the last week from the council, council members, as they've had discussions about this bill.
Mr. Trumpauer. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm one of the members of the council that expressed concern about this, this legislation. From, from what I see from the next one, I mean, that seems to be more along the lines of what I would be willing to support. But just so I understand, and I know, I don't want to go out of order and talk about the amendment, but it, it seems like the only change you're, you're going to propose this week is taking the county attorney out, or?
Out of the bill entirely.
Okay. So, so it would stand as is for the police chief?
Solely for the police chief, yes.
Okay. Okay. I just, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the council? Mr. Prudka?
What is the number? Can you tell me the number of the bill that, that is related to this?
7115.
And what that bill does is the, allows the police chief, and Mr. Marzick, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but it allows the police chief, as I read it, to switch